Yes, and on theme and topic with all things data sharing, particularly as it relates to indicators in our Destination 2025 Strategic Plan, we're now going to share some 2023 data on the division's cohort graduation and dropout rates, which we've alluded to quite a bit already, and our career and technical education certifications. Dr. Hinton.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today, we will be providing you with our annual update on college and career readiness. Two goals of Destination 2025 are to achieve academic excellence and to lead dialogue to ensure equity and access for all students. Several metrics help us to monitor our progress towards these goals, including on-time graduation rates, dropout rates, and career and technical certifications. Each of these metrics are examined through an equity lens to identify under or overrepresentation of specific groups. The Virginia on-time graduation rate is based on individual student data tracked over time that accounts for student mobility and retention patterns, and is also adjusted for students with disabilities and EL students who may take longer than four years to earn a diploma. Students earning a board-approved diploma are considered as graduates. Students who earn GED certificates or complete high school without earning a diploma are not included. In 2023, we had 3,743 total graduates, resulting in nine out of every 10 students who entered the ninth grade in 2019 earning a diploma. Of those graduates, 61% earned an advanced studies or IB diploma, 37% earned a standard diploma, and 2% earned an applied diploma. The overall graduation rate for Henrico was 90.7%, which is the highest rate since COVID in 2020. State-level trends are showing a slight decline from the prior year, while Henrico has increased our graduation rate. The cohort dropout rate includes former students who do not stay enrolled in high school throughout their four years, as well as any student whose latest status is unconfirmed, meaning reported as a transfer to another division but discontinued public schooling instead. This dropout rate calculation is not the inverse of the graduation rate. As I mentioned, students who may have completed, such as having earned a GED, but are not considered as graduates or dropouts. In 2023, Henrico had 274 students reported as dropped out or unconfirmed, which is an 11% decrease from 2022. The dropout rate of 6.6% is the lowest since 2018. To explore this data by student group, the division uses an Equity Index formula. The Equity Index is used to identify groups that are under or overrepresented. Scores less than one indicate under-representation of the group, whereas an index score higher than one shows over-representation of the group. In looking at the Equity Index for on-time graduation, we are pleased that most of our student groups are equitably represented in the data. However, as we've noted in the past, we continue to see an under-representation of our Hispanic and English learner students in this indicator. However, improvement is noted for the Hispanic group since 2018-19. When the index is calculated at the state level, you can see that Henrico trends mirror those of the state, particularly among English learner students. Consequently, when we look at the Equity Index for dropouts, Hispanic and English learner students continue to be overrepresented in this indicator at both the division and the state level. Additionally, in Henrico and across the state, we continue to see an over-representation of students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students. When comparing to 2018-19 data, which is the first year of our strategic plan, some progress has been made with our Hispanic, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged student groups. In a few slides, staff will present more detailed information on the supports and strategies in place to help students meet graduation requirements. However, at this time, Mac Beaton, Director of Career and Workforce Development, will share information about career and technical certifications of our graduates, which is another metric of college and career readiness.
Good afternoon. In 2019-20, we awarded 3,361 industry certifications and state license. This was not where we wanted to be, but obviously, the pandemic had a major impact on that. In 21... Oh, thank you, Thomas. Somewhere right on here. I'll find it. There we go. In 21-22, we awarded 5,514 industry certifications state license. Last year, we awarded 6,253 industry certifications and state license. Now, what's important to remember in these state licenses, this test a deeper understanding of the subject matter based on the student's ability to apply the concepts they've learned in the classrooms to solve problems. We continue to work to ensure that these certifications offer our students... that we offer our students are meaningful. Last year, we offered 73 different certifications that are directly connected to the courses and are meaningful certifications for employers as students continue their education. Successfully reaching graduation is often multiple factors that impact this. For students who are CTE completers, our graduation rate continues to trend upward. Last year, we had a graduation rate of 98.91%. Now, this is something to be excited about. But there are several factors that contribute to this success. When students are in CTE courses, they gain and build confidence based on their ability to succeed. The hands-on approach leads to practical problem solving. Other important factors that leads to CTE student's success is relationships. Our CTE teachers, because of the nature of the course, their experience in the field, the students' interests, can form meaningful relationship with the students that help motivate and encourage them to success. The motto "Failure is not an option" is very prevalent in our programs. Now, one of our new places that we measure our success, as we were talking about earlier, is learning opportunities in the workplace. What we... the state refers to as high-quality work-based learning opportunities. Last year, we reported 1,648 high-quality work-based learning opportunities. According to VDOE, work-based learning experiences must meet three criteria to be deemed as high-quality: relate to the student's career goals and interests, integrate with instruction, and performed in partnership with local businesses and organizations. At the time of this report, we had one staff member working towards collecting this data. We are sure that this number will continue to grow as the opportunities for our students continues to grow. Through high-quality work-based learning opportunities that has a direct connection to student interest and coursework, we know our students will be better equipped to graduate, enrolled, enlisted, and/or employed. I will now turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Farrell.
Over the past year, our high schools have continued to prioritize personalized support and partnership building with students and their families. As we enter the 23-24 school year, we want to highlight some of the ongoing initiatives and new strategies in place to ensure the success of all students, including those who have faced challenges during the previous academic year. Before the start of this school year, our dedicated school staff proactively reached out to students and their families through home visits or on-campus meetings. These interactions aim to establish strong partnerships and to collaboratively develop individualized goals for students who may have struggled in the 22-23 school year. Our high schools continue to be intentional with leveraging various teams: intervention teams, attendance teams, and school quality teams for each student cohort. We closely monitor early warning signs like attendance, grades, and disciplinary incidents to identify students in need of additional support. The level of support provided is tailored to each student's specific needs and experiences. To assist students who are behind in credits, we continue to offer the Eight Block Schedule in some of our schools, which provides opportunities during the school day for students to earn additional credits. We also offer opportunities for students to complete extra courses through platforms like Edge Annuity and Evening School programs. Beyond academic support, we remain committed to fostering a sense of belonging within our school community. We encourage students to participate in extracurricular programs, such as clubs, sports, and mentorship opportunities, as we believe that a strong connection beyond the classroom enhances the overall school experience. Our schools are dedicated to ensuring that all students graduate on time. We consistently review and monitor progress and provide personalized support to exceptional education students, English learners, economically disadvantaged students, and those in other reporting categories. It is through this individualized approach that we aim to achieve success for every student in our community. This concludes our update, and we welcome questions at this time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Farrell, Dr. Hinton, and Mr. Beaton. Reverend Cooper, do you have questions or comments?
Well, just a couple observations, questions, and comments. So first and foremost, thank you all for the presentation. I'm happy to see our graduation rate at the highest it's been since before the pandemic, as well as our dropout rate, the lowest since before the pandemic, so I'm really excited about that. Mr. Beaton, can you ask a couple quick questions for me? So really appreciative of that graduation rate for those who enter into our CTE program. Currently, how many seats do we have in CTE?
With the completion...
Before.
Beforehand? Oh, let's see, it'd be about 1,200 seats available.
All right, so... And the new ones online will give us what?
Will be up to 2,000.
Okay, so additional 800. So what's our waiting list? I'm kind of getting that.
We've been averaging, depending on the year, and, you know, because it fluctuates, around about 800 students. So we should be able to meet our needs, and then we have a little bit of flexibility with some additional space at the Oak if we start to grow. But I think what you're going to find, too, is with the new additional spaces, we're creating new additional offerings that's going to open up some opportunities for students that they haven't seen before. And some of the programs that we've had a large waiting list will shift over. For instance, if you're... we might have a huge waiting list for sports medicine, but if you add in physical therapy, you're going to start to pull some of those students out into that program.
Well, I think that's phenomenal. You kind of surmised what I was getting at. Basically, we have a successful graduation rate now. We are at full capacity, but adding capacity with more opportunities, and there are those students that want to take advantage of those opportunities as soon as those opportunities become available, and we have the ability to expand that even more.
Yes, sir.
You know, for me, everybody's path is not the same, and I think the reporting that we've seen in regards to our indicators, performance indicator last presentation, the new metric that they added, that kind of is able to encapsulate the fact that it's not just about what takes place in the classroom, but also career and technical education, and that is a viable career path forward for a lot of people. Every time I go to the Oak, as you know, when I meet for my CTE foundation meeting, the people that come after hours to get certifications and training, it's just... I'm in awe, just the diversity of the people, the social-economic background, the race, the gender, and it says that we're doing a phenomenal job of helping to do workforce development even in our schools right now for adults. And so I just want us to continue to make this as robust as possible, because I think in the global world in which we live in now, you always make the analogy of, you know, we don't teach people how to fix toasters or TVs anymore because they don't buy toasters, TVs, they get a new one, or a CD player, tape player. It's constantly evolving, and I hope that we continue to be on the cutting edge. Another point of privilege I was excited on yesterday to go to Henrico High School's convocation, and it was kind of a bittersweet, kind of swan song for me, because it's my last one in the capacity Ms. Ogburn as a school board. But I was so excited when Ms. Castiel Rose shared the graduation date and time, and she stated it will be at the Henrico Sports and Events Center. And so that's a watershed moment as well for us to have this phenomenal facility coming online, and the class of 2023 for... because we're in '23 now, will be the first class. And I just think that speaks volumes to where we're always trying to go academically, facility, and just as a division. So thank you all, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. Let's see, Mrs. Shea.
Thank you so much. Just two questions, I think they're for you, Dr. Hinton. Why is GED... why are GED students not included in the graduation rate? Do we know?
I can't speak to the rationale on that. That's determined by the state.
Don't we love that? Thank you. And then also, do we have, or could you share with me? If it's reinventing the wheel, I don't want y'all to do that. But, you know, as we look at our dropout rates slide, the biggest outlier is our Hispanic students and our English learner students. They have significantly the largest number there in the Equity Index. So do we have that information kind of disaggregated? So if we look at Hispanic students who are not EL students and how that number might compare with the others? I know you don't have it off the top of your head, but I didn't know if that was something that, you know, we could look at just to see what the... you know, because there's overlap there, and so just to try to parse that out and kind of see where we are.
Sure, we can get that for you.
Awesome. And then just, Mac, you know, I'm a fan of you and everything you do and everything your department does, and I'll just take a little point of privilege to just share happy related with this. There's a student that I got to work one-on-one with last year and made a relationship with, who, as one of the slides said, the warning indicators that are monitored for dropout checked all those boxes. And when I was working with them, I said, "Have you ever considered being a nurse?" Because they are so smart. And they were accepted into the nursing program as... or one of the related programs as a sophomore. And I saw them in the building last week or the week before, and they ran up and they said, "Miss Shea, I love it. I love the nursing program." And even furthermore, they have gotten enough credits that they are going to graduate a year early. And their attendance is spot-on, and their behavior is spot-on, and all of those things have just kind of come together and clicked. And so it's just so joyful when any of our students, they find their niche, and they find their passion, and it has long-lasting impacts, not only to get them across the stage in May, May now, get them across the stage in May, but to do it, as you say, with... equipped with what they need to start a career and to go into the world and be successful, and that we're giving them everything we need. So whether that be, you know, enlisted or employed or going on with our education, wherever path, we're really equipping them and getting them across the stage. So thank you to you and your team and for all the work you do. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea, Mrs. Ogburn.
Mac, don't leave. You're getting your steps in, going back and forth. Can we look at this slide, the one that had the graduation rate on it? When I was looking at this, knowing what you do for the kids at Henrico, if you take out the certifications, because obviously, not every kid's going to get one, but I thought, isn't that what they all need? You know, really and truly, that's what all of our kids need. Now, granted, if they're going to continue on their education, they're not going to necessarily have a certification, but they all need those relationships. They need those opportunities. It is what... that sort of encapsulates everything that we're supposed to be doing. And I'm such a big fan of internships and kids having the ability early on to see what they might be interested in. And like you said, that spark that is ignited in a kid, that is why you do what you do. And so for you to put this together for us, I was so excited to see this, because it really is something that every teacher in the county, that's it right there. So I don't know, I'm... the graduation rate of 98.9, I mean, oh, my gosh, you're right. That is something to be excited about. And obviously, with everything that's going on in your world, I don't know how you have time to do what you do, but just really, really excited about where it's gone, where it's come from, and where it's going, and the vision that you keep sharing with us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Ms. Atkins.
And Mr. Beaton, if you'd come on back.
Don't go anywhere.
Come on back. I think that when I look at each individual piece on this slide with a 98.91%, and as you were speaking, what was flowing through my head was anticipation and expectation. Our students are anticipating doing well, and teachers are expecting them to do so. That's beyond academics. That's really around some foundational expectations of whomever our children encounter. Making sure that they are with qualified staff that have high expectations, not just academically, but showing them, not just telling them. And I really think that all of those pieces form well to a beautiful puzzle. I'll say it that way. And part of this really, truly is the leadership that is brought into this space and being an example. I know your plate is full, but the reward is so much bigger that you can continue. And I'll just leave it there. So thank you for everything. I do have some more. So, Dr. Farrell, if you'd come on to the mic. And so, Dr. Hinton as well, you may be helpful in this particular space. Just seeing the progress is very encouraging. I'm very pleased to see it across the board. Across the board, and I believe that it will just continue to get better. I am curious, I don't know which slide it is that mentioned mentoring, because this is a space that I am hopeful that we would dive into much, much more, because it speaks to relationships. The last... yeah, there we go. Can you share with me what engagement you've seen, not just from students, but from the community, as well as staff in this space of mentoring? I know we have Henrico heroes as well, so I just want to say that.
So starting with the schools, our school staff, teachers, coaches have stepped up to sort of partner with students who need additional supports. Also, in some of our schools, they've leveraged juniors and seniors to support the ninth and 10th graders. We're not where we're going to be in the next, say, three to five years, but we are doing a good job of leveraging what we have in our schools. We've also had some schools to reach out to families, to come in and support in any way possible. In fact, in one of your schools, Ms. Atkins, Avrana High School, Principal Sears has done a great job of leveraging, you know, parental support in terms of, you know, getting parents to participate in the overall school environment. So to answer your question, student mentorship, staff mentorship, and working towards engaging the community a little more effectively.
How has Henrico Heroes been valuable in that space?
That's a great question. I'll have to get back to you on that one.
That's fine.
Some of our schools leverage Henrico Heroes with, you know, small groups of students. We also have communities in schools, and some of our schools that have been a tremendous resource and support. So I'll get back to you with more on Henrico Heroes.
Thank you so much. When I saw that on there, I thought, what a great area to expand upon in deepening relationships with students just across Henrico. I've seen, I want to say Deep Run, I saw some great stuff there. I think it was Deep Run, especially around their Black Student Union. And the sparks that I see when they have the opportunity to have a mentor that perhaps they can lean in on in ways where they can't with no one else. So I appreciate your response and sharing more information. The other area I want to understand, and this data may not even be available, but trying to think innovatively and thinking 21st century, do we have, or can you shed any light on data that would align with the impacts on well-being? The reason I ask that, when I think about dropout rates, and I just think across the board about well-being, and we're going to continue to see impacts specifically around mental well-being, I would be very curious as to what those impacts look like. I don't know how preventable they are, but to understand how many students across Henrico have absenteeism because of their health, which may trigger another response to our dropout rate, is that something that's available? And if so, are we privy to a deep dive on it? If it's not available, how can we be the catalyst to start the conversation on it?
So let me give some thought to that in terms of what data we may already have available, and we can get back with you. I know that we certainly do have some coding related to why students are absent, so we can delve into that further. But in terms of, like, specific well-being measures, we'd have to look at that.
I appreciate that. I don't know of any other school system that has really taken a deeper dive. And, Dr. Cashwell, you may know of some, I just don't know of any, but I thought, just thinking about the future, if that's a conversation that we can continue to have and dive deeper in, we may have some solutions, specifically, not that we are a hospital or provide healthcare services, but having an understanding of trauma and what our families across Henrico are going through, we could be a resource. And so that's just to giving you some context into what I'm thinking, so I appreciate.
This may be getting too granular, but I think it relates to what you're speaking to, which is that broader connection, right, between students' well-being and then their academic success, their attendance in school, all of those things go hand-in-hand, and we know the research says that. So I think some of our efforts around the full-service community models, and specifically, if, you know, you drill down to, for example, the telehealth clinic at Glenly, right? So that was parsing down why are students absent, and the role that access to quality healthcare, you know, if the ear infection can be diagnosed in-house, they're not missing school for appointments, and connections made, and all of those things, and that can reduce... that increases well-being. It can reduce absenteeism. So I think, you know, I certainly understand your question, and I think there may not be one dataset out there that gives us that picture holistically, but there are many, and we've begun that work of how to connect all of those things to inform our work, our wraparounds, our placement of family, community engagement, community and school staff, and so on. So we'll continue to push on that, because there's no doubt they're connected.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Atkins. My questions are going to be, well, I guess maybe one for Dr. Farrell. So I have to say, when we had our back-to-school presentation, I was really appreciative of the home visits and just the community outreach that I believe really must have been ramped up a level in August, if I'm not mistaken, in comparison to prior years. When Ms. Atkins was referencing the chronic absenteeism earlier in the truancy, as to the chronic absenteeism, perhaps even more advocates for... should be added to look into attendance? I mean, either more advocates added or pay our advocates more in general, and then add maybe responsibilities there, because it seems like they're already doing the work in the community.
I think you bring up a great point, Mrs. Consell, which is the role so many of our staff have in playing into this bigger attendance piece. So, I mean, you might have an attendance officer working where there's already a problem or chronic issue, but then all of the preventative pieces. And so one of the things our family and community engagement team has done, as they're... as we have more family advocates and school resource coordinators placed out in schools this year, so all of our schools are covered, you know, perhaps a family is struggling with access to a community resource, but that would then prevent, you know, lack of access to... that is preventing perhaps attendance regularly in school or something of that nature. They can make those key connections for families and thus prevent the issues. So I think it's all of those layers of support staff are critical, both, you know, directly on the attendance front, the point Mrs. Atkins was making, to your point, those support staff, the work our social workers do, and so on. So as those wraparound supports become more robust in schools, I think we see, hopefully, more preventative work, you know, proactive versus reactive when there's a problem, which is our goal.
And since they have the relationships, too, I mean, it just, it goes with everything that we're doing. So when I looked at that slide, so apologies, Dr. Farrell, I kept you at the podium unnecessarily. My next two questions are for Mr. Bayton. And I'm going to be speaking to the, our work-based learning again. So we have 1,648 work-based learning opportunities.
Those are the ones we captured, yes, ma'am.
So how do we, are we doing this well? Where are we in this space? Because this is new, correct?
This is new, and this was their first step at grabbing this, and honestly, this is their low, I'm going to call it our low-hanging fruit, the ones that are easy to capture. I think the opportunity exists for students who may not be in CTE programs yet, and I use that term "yet" because I think it's a great opportunity, but to help them find that avenue through these high-quality work-based learning experiences to find out what they want to do or what they don't want to do, it's just as important as what they do want to do. And our hope is that we're going to add additional staffing through the budget process to start to work, because to ask a school counselor to do that on top of everything else they're doing is a tremendous lift. I really feel like, you know, it has to be someone who's connected to the business world and connected to the students, and being able to make those unions between the two and find out those opportunities that exist and where these opportunities need to exist.
Yes, so if we could go to the last slide where we had the mentorship. So I'm not really thinking, this is a different kind of mentorship. When I was looking into this, other school divisions have career counselors or career coaches, and I know we have coaches, but they're not necessarily in this space, right, with career, or life-ready, or helping students rule things in or rule things out. So is this something that we're looking at?
Yeah, I would think it's not even just the staff, but those experiences that begin in elementary school, which you've been seeing us sort of unpack and develop over the years with the major clarity, and students having access to tools and resources and lessons to engage them, even at the elementary level, through our school counseling programs that have them begin thinking about pathways and opportunities, because if it doesn't start early, oftentimes, you know, students aren't, or their families for that matter, aren't aware of the many options in middle school that would lead to some of the secondary options, you know, the high school options. So I think it's all of those things working together, not just in the high schools. But I think what's been done masterfully, both in the career and technical education arena and our elementary through secondary world, is kind of lining up all these things, right? And I think, you know, Mr. Bayton made an excellent point, that this idea of high-quality work-based learning experiences, they don't just live in that career, you know, they're there, we can document them very clearly in the CTE space, but what do they look like everywhere else, and how do we start building stronger bridges and connections to capture all of those and do so in a manner that, you know, begins this conversation early on with students?
I mean, I guess I'm thinking about staffing, and I'm also thinking about, you know, if I'm a counselor, and having heard from my counselors at the secondary level, they've got a lot going on, but I'm speaking, I realize our why, that we're exposing our students younger to, you know, what is your passion, what do you like in elementary school, right, all of our career things, and then our middle school, and middle school and high school opportunities with the summer polytech programs, for example. But I was wondering, I just think that how many, a person who this is what they do, this is what, it's not something added to their plate, it is what they do to engage with our students might be valuable, because not everyone is, and if I go to the counselor, you know, I may be pushed into an honors class or an AP class or something that really isn't for me. So to me, these work-based learning experiences, or at least this exposure, ruling them in, ruling them out, I mean, if we only have 1,648, what does that include? I mean, I'm just thinking, if we only have one person doing this, is that enough for a division our size?
Well, in comparison, just to give you a number-wise, so I'm very proud of that number, because Chesterfield had 2,000, it was like right at 2,100 high-quality work-based learning experiences. So I'm very proud of that number of what we accomplished. Now, they do have a few more people working towards gathering that, but I think we're doing a great job, and I think, but I think the opportunity's there. If you ask me what our ideal number would be, if we have 4,000 students graduating every year, 4,000 high-quality work-based learning opportunities would be the ideal world, and we'll work to get there.
Yeah, and I think this is reflected even before the VDOE and high-quality, you know, our strategic plan and our, it says, every student before they walk across the stage in Henrico School will have engaged in a job shadow, an internship, a mentorship, they're going to have that life-ready experience. So this is something we were committed to long before the, you know, the state. But I think it does bring us, you know, an opportunity to look at other models that are out there, other positions, the way other districts handle this, certainly nothing's off the table as we kind of think about what's the right structure to really accelerate this work in service of our students.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's it.